Thirty, I'll call this morning's meeting to order. I'm looking for an approval of the agenda.
Remove approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second.
Oh, ma'am chair, I think we were, was that item number two was gonna be removed?
We have a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of item number two. Does that fit your second as well?
Yes.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, thank you. Citizens to be heard, is there anyone wishing to speak on anything not previously added to the agenda? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move into the approval or payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wayland to approve.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Gross. Further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We have the August 21st meeting minutes.
Remove approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve and a second by Commissioner Wayland. Any further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, thank you. Employee longevity awards.
Okay. So today we have Mike Clark. Mike, will you come up?
I'm not ready.[114.22][114.22](Laughter).
Mike presented you this plaque today in recognition of your grateful service for 15 years to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you very much.[125.04][125.04](Applause).
All right. Mike has been with us for a long, 15 years.[138.06][138.06](Laughter). He pays all the bills and gets everything done and comes in early in the morning or stays late, no matter what it takes to get everything paid so we really appreciate all of his work.
Thank you.[153.56][153.56](Applause).
Okay, Brian Axman, is Brian here?
Could you wait a second?
No problem. No problem. All right, Ross Olson, I saw Ross here. Ross, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ross, we're honoring you today in grateful recognition of your 20 years of service to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you for all you do. And Mike Clark's here for you.
Thank you very much. Ross is part of Langfield crew that we have out there and he's always picking up trash and he does everything we need to have done out there. He's very, very helpful and it's been very, very positive having him work out there. So thank you very much, Ross, and the board for another 20 years.
Yes.[214.01][214.01](Laughter).[215.01][215.01](Applause). Brian Melton is not here, but we're gonna honor Brian for his service to Clay County, 20 years of dedicated service, but Brian's also on a guard deployment, so I think he's doing his thing.
Thank you. Brian has mentioned couldn't be here today, but we'd like to set this on his behalf for all his dedicated service for the year and protection of our citizens and watching after our county activities here.[248.12][248.12](Applause).
Okay, Kristy Sisk. Come on up, Kristy.
Good morning, Kristy. Kristy, we're honoring you today for your 25 years of dedicated service to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you so much for all that you do.[274.64][274.64](Applause).
Kristy is one of our outstanding long-term, see I'm gonna be nice, no. Our long-term employees, I harass her all the time, so surprisingly she still is with us after all that harassment. She's worked in a variety of areas, but most recently as a case aide in our adult health programs and she keeps everyone organized and she's really outstanding in the work that she does and she's gonna be here another 25 years, so we're looking forward to that.[309.83][309.83](Laughter) Thank you, Kristy.
Kathy Odd.
Kathy, we're honoring you today for your 30 years of outstanding service to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you.[336.02][336.02](Applause).
So it took me a long time to come up with anything to say. Just kidding, Kathy, it's been wonderful for us. She initially started over at Social Services and we brought her into our fold many years ago and she diligently gives all the information entered into our state system and works with both social service people and clients to get everything taken care of and is sincerely sincere about all the work she does, so we really appreciate her 30 years that she's been here.
Thank you.[375.11][375.11](Applause).
Ryan Axman, why don't you come on up?
Fantastic time. Ryan, we're honoring you today for the 15 years of service that you've given to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you very much.[402.02][402.02](Applause). Brian here is what I'd like to call my anchor. He is about as reliable and consistent as any employee I've ever had. He works a difficult shift in a very difficult job, so he does a fantastic job and we're lucky to have you. Thank you very much.[427.24][427.24](Applause).
All right, thank you, everyone. Moving on to our next item.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Clear out a little bit. All right. Yep, all right, our next item is item number three, the request adoption of resolution 2018-32, the grant funding to serve homeless families. Colleen Murray from Lakes and Prairies. See that you have Lori as well, the new executive director? Good morning.
Good morning.
And I am the liaison to this board and Commissioner Haney is my alternate on Lakes and Prairies as well, so good to see you guys this morning.
Thank you for having us. Again, I'm Colleen Murray of Lakes and Prairies Community Action. Lori Ward, Lori Schwartz is our executive director. That's the only good name for a little six years.
Yeah, I almost said Lori Ward as well.
Right. We're just here this morning, first of all, thank you for your support in the task for our homeless programs or housing programs. Lakes and Prairies serves about 600 households in Clay County every year that are experiencing homelessness or at the risk of becoming homeless and we appreciate the county board's support in that. This morning is back to school day in Minnesota and I, like many other people, dropped our kids off this morning and got them off to a great start. But the sad part about that is in Clay County, there's about 76 kids who started their commute without a place to call home. So they're already starting off kind of behind the game this morning. The reason why we're here this morning is because we've been approved for a grant through a local collaborative regional application to serve families experiencing homelessness across the county. We do have letters of support that'll pass around here from all of our schools across the county. They're on board and working with us on this project. Funding will be used to provide outreach and support services to children in each one of those schools. We are requesting the county board support this grant by signing the resolution that we provided in the packet to show maybe support this effort. Again, these funds will be used to help students across Clay County achieve greater educational strides by providing a single home for them to go to, go to every night. This funding does cover only about a quarter of the funds that will be required to provide as supportive services to these families. You know, an apartment or a home is just the start, but figuring out what happens to lead to homelessness and make sure that we have it again is a big key that we play in that. So a tax levy will also be critical to support the successful implementation of this project. At this point, we are just asking for your support for this, the board starts up with a grant and helping us ensure that our community children have a place to call home.
Colleen, what's the total of the grant?
The grant for the supportive services in Clay County will be $30,000 for three years.
Okay.
And typically about $40,000 is a full-time case manager.
Okay. And who did you say the grant was from?
It's from the Minnesota Housing.
Okay.
It's the Family Homeless Prevention Assistance Program.
So if we approve this and for some reason a levy is not granted, obviously you can do things with the grant money that you have.
We can do things with the grant money.
Just not the full?
We would need to be able to back.
Okay.
Be able to serve the same number.
So by us approving this, there's no additional match that you're asking for today, just the approval of the grant?
Just the resolution.
Okay. Questions for Colleen and/or Lori?
Did you provide us with the schedules from the 990 form so we can see how your funding is comprised?
Well, as a member and the chair of this board, I have seen those because I'm on the audit committee. So I've been in all of your different audit checks and I'm also on the financial committee for Lakes and Prairies and so I've seen them. If you would like them supplied to the rest of the board, we can definitely do that.
So this is not contingent upon the tax levy?
No, this, all that you're, if I'm correct, all that you're asking for is you need approval by this board for the grant to be supplied to you and the grant total is $30,000.
Correct.
What, the whole?
Is that 30 for each of three years?
It's 30 for the total.
Total.
So it's $10,000 a year.
Okay, okay.
And then there's a separate rental assistance portion that's provided through the Clay County.
So there is more that you'd like to do, would a levy be supplied, but all of this board's requirements, or for the requirements for the grant is that you get this board's approval so that you can get the thing?
Correct.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you audition?
Yeah, so the $10,000 per year then, is that, is that to help cover staffing to plan this or can you?
Yep, it's to cover supportive services, is what we call that. So helping families address the reasons why they became homeless in the first place, so maybe helping connect them to a living wage job or figuring out if they had, you know, maybe they had a chemical dependence issues, they're needing some treatment, figuring out what that root cause was and working with them to make sure it doesn't happen again so that this can be the last time that those families experience homelessness.
I noticed on the schools, Ullin Hitterdall is not included, is that they part of this program too?
They are part of this program as well, yeah.
Oh, did I miss that?
They are, are the program.
I didn't do that with other support, I didn't know where we left out Ullin Hitterdall.
Yes.
Okay.
All the schools across Clay County are part of this and committed to helping connect us to those families that need the services.
I guess I did have another question, sort of in what Commissioner Campbell asked, you know, I'm looking at $10,000 and 76 homeless kids. What's that gonna do? Is it gonna find a home for them or, I mean, why are these kids homeless now? I mean, don't they have a house to go to at night or where do they go at night now?
Well, we do have a shelter in Morehead that provides housing for some families that are experiencing homelessness, but that's, I believe, 10 family rooms. So there are a lot of families that are, you know, staying with family and friends temporarily, sitting on somebody's couch, maybe living in their car unfortunately, camping this time of year. We do have a lot of folks that don't have any place to go at night. And the $10,000 a year will cover a quarter of a position for us to be able to provide supportive services. Traditionally that we probably would serve, I'm gonna say 10 households a year on a quarter of a position through this kind of project. Some families won't need a lot of support at all, they just need a little help getting back on their feet. Another 70 have experienced homelessness many, many times and need a little bit more help to stabilize.
So if you're homeless, how do they decide which school they go to?
You always stay in your school of origin, so, you know, if I lost my housing tonight, my kids go to school in Morehead, they would stay in Morehead even if I had to go far to a shelter because you want kids to have that consistency. So wherever they were when they became homeless is where they would stay at school.
Thank you.
Commissioner Campbell.
Is there any collaboration between you and, whether it's the Clay County HRA or the Morehead HRA, do you collaborate with them on these issues?
Yes, all the time and they are one of the 21 collaborative partners that are involved in this project, so we definitely are working together to try and resolve these issues.
So I would guess that in seeing what the whole need was and looking at what the staffing need was, you sought out additional grant funding to help reduce what the burden locally would be on this and so that's what's great. Lakes and Prairies writes for a number of grants. Can you just give me a number, what we're looking at annually, what you secure in grant funding?
It's over a million dollars that we bring in from state and local, state and federal resources.
And I guess I'm always encouraged that, I mean, that's a million dollars in programming, that yes, it's coming from some sort of tax somewhere else, but to not have to have that on our specific levy, I always definitely appreciate the work that you do.
I'll move the resolution.
We have a motion to approve a resolution by Commissioner Wayland, resolution 2018-32.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Gross. Further discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number four is a request to fill a vacancy for the computer support specialist, Tim Dent.
Good morning.
Good morning. I am here to seek board approval to fill a vacant position, computer support specialist. Please do what I said.
Okay. So this is a budgeted position and you're looking to see it immediately?
Correct.
Remove approval.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Wayland.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Gross.
I'm assuming that that backfill won't be an issue here?
Right.
Okay.
Further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. I'm sad to see him go, he's been very helpful to me when I can't figure out.
Yes, I figure, about a week short of six years. Thank you.
Item number five is a request approval to fill a vacancy for the assistant county attorney. Good morning. For some reason, this is pan-lassed.
Everybody asks who that is. I keep getting emails back saying, sorry, I meant to send this to somebody else.
Okay. I'm here also to request to fill a vacancy. Lori Conroy in our office, who's been in our office for the last six and a half years, is taking a job with the US State's Attorney, or the US Attorney's Office as an immigration lawyer. So I have, we want to fill her vacancy. I also have a, I'm trying to get on the front end of it. As you guys are aware, Mr. Melton's been deployed. We have a contract position that we have filled for entry level attorney, basically doing our DUIs traffic stuff. With Mr. Melton out, now Ms. Conroy leaving, essentially leaves me as the only substantive trial attorney in our office. We don't, we have a bunch of new attorneys that I think will become good at trial attorneys in time, but right now we don't have that in our office. We have three murder trials pending, we have three attempted murder trials pending, we have just some really big cases that are coming up. And so normally when we hire, we hire, you know, with step one coming in entry level. I know that if we want a step two, we have to get approval from Mr. Larson to do that. Anything three and above, we need to get board approval. I'm asking the board to approve just preliminarily that if we find the right candidate, if we can advertise for a trial attorney and get the right candidate, that we be allowed to go up to a five. Honestly, I don't, I think that's really optimistic to think that we'll get that with the applicants that we've been getting in the past. It's normally entry level. Usually prosecutors' offices are an entry level position for attorneys to get their feet wet, but if there is an experienced trial attorney out there, I would hate to lose our shot at that person when we're in desperate need of a trial attorney. So I'm asking for approval that we can advertise for up to five years of trial experience if we find that person and they meet the qualifications and I'm assuming Steve and I will be the ones doing the interview for that person if we believe that they're worthy of that step increase, that be allowed to offer them that, so we can get somebody with good background and trial experience in our office. I would note that we've already budgeted in Ms. Conroy's salary for the next year with Mr. Melton deferring his beginning October 1st. I think we have that in the budget to fill that for this year and next year we'd still be under because step five is three steps below it we budgeted for Ms. Conroy.
That answered my question.
Okay.
Thank you. I would move approval, going up to step five if necessary.
We have a motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve the request in the case.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Wayland. Further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. I just have a question in terms of what your numbers are down there. I know the summer we had worked on a temporary for that, a new hire that you were waiting on, some documents, have you?
He's back. Yep, he just got his card approved and he was back with approval Thursday morning.
Okay.
So we do have him back, so we're.
So how much are you still short though?
With Ms. Conroy leaving, we'll be one short.
And that's the one you're looking at, replacing?
Right. And she's here, well, her last day in the office or is, what did she say? Her last day of employment is the 27th of September, but she's taking vacation time pretty much for most of it, so I think she's effectively got three or four days left in the office, she'll physically be in the office, so we'd like to get this advertised and hopefully get somebody beginning of October in place.
Okay.
And then we will be full staffed.
Okay. And are you still seeing case loads that are still going up?
Crazy high.
Okay.
Yeah, like I, I don't remember the last time we had three, first, well, two first degree murders and a primemehicular homicide open at the same time in our office.
So if you fill Ms. Conroy's position, will you have enough staffing to cover that workload?
Honestly, no. I mean, I'm getting complaint, well, not complaints, oh, yeah, complaints, almost daily in my office, the attorneys down there, they just can't handle the workload and we've been operating short.
Right.
So I keep telling them, hopefully when we get someone, if we get someone with good experience that can come in and, you know, do what Lori did, yeah, we'll be, I think we'll be fine, but if we get another, you know, entry level attorney, we're gonna be drowning.
And I'm, part of my question is if we're still under in terms of what you've budgeted, is there any way you could get some sort of variable hour in there if we're still under the money to help with, I mean, I know you're in a big transition down there specifically with, you know, now that Jenny's gone and Brian's on deployment and just to kind of help in the meantime, is that something that you've entertained?
Well, we would love to do that, it's very hard to find an attorney to fill that type of position. It was hard to find the contract position, we were just lucky enough that it was somebody that had applied for the civil division that had an opening and he could do it. Quite honestly, my fear is if we don't get the applicants for this open position, Anthony Wayland, who took that contract position, he's fitting in really well and I think he's gonna apply, but again, he's an entry level attorney. If we hired him, then we'd be short again, the contract attorney. But yeah, if we could find someone, attorney, that would be able to come in and work temporary, kind of fill in hours, that would be helpful, but.
Commissioner Campbell.
Pam, it's been a long time since I asked this. We contract with the city of Morehead too.
Yes.
So we provide service for them as well. Do those attorneys primarily handle the municipal stuff or are they involved with some of these?
Yes, they, yep, they are. The way, so we contract with Morehead, Holly, Dilworth, Linden, Barnesville, Dilworth, yeah. And so they pay a contract, so they pay, right now they're paying for two attorneys. We've been trying to up that with the city to get them to give us another attorney. We've been so far unsuccessful with the city manager to do that. We keep asking and we're gonna keep asking for that, but the attorneys that are, they're paying are doing county work. In fact, one of them is an entry level, the other one was Steve, we're gonna have to switch that out because he can't be under the city contract now, but it'll be someone equal to his pay. We try and get, keep the pay even, but yeah, the ones that are technically listed under the city contract are doing the county work as well.
Which can include major criminal cases?
Yep, yes.
Any other questions? Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. We'll call for the question. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item is the budget review for the attorney's office. Steve? Pam, are you standing for this?
I'll sit here, but he's got a talk in.
Good morning.
Good morning. Pam, chair members, you have, I think Lori before you, are opposed to vote next year and I know it's.
Page 17.
Already kind of moved into some of this territory in the last agenda item, but the short answer to the question is, no, we're not asking for more money next year, at least not next year. You will, you will see the numbers change here and there, but if you go all the way to the end, you will see that the bottom line is the same. Our primary expense in our office, like many offices, is personnel. We're not an equipment heavy place, so we do have our technology needs and we IT subscription needs, but we're largely a personnel driven office. Expenses, we have projected to be essentially flat, to the extent we have gone over some things like, well, you know, some sizable cases we have in our office and past year was somewhat similar. There is a litigation budget and when we exhaust the litigation budget, we do have some forfeiture funds that we tap into, so that's, that's our plan as we look ahead to next year with our anticipated higher litigation costs. Those litigation costs are not your everyday, not your sort of your everyday cases, those are things that, getting an officer over here, of course, that's on the officer's time and such, we're talking about experts, people who have to be brought in from elsewhere, witnesses who maybe saw something here but don't live here, we have to bring them back. So that's, that's what that budget is. As far as other items in here, I guess I'll leave it at that and open to your questions. Before we're done, I do want to ask Michelle Osmowski, who is the head of our Restorative Justice Division, to come up and speak a bit to that. She knows her budget very well, she certainly knows it a lot better than I do or Pam does probably.
All right, let's cover questions maybe on this. Commissioner Campbell.
I want to go back if I could to, Pam, you brought up about the negotiations with Morehead. So are you talking about negotiations with just Morehead, are you talking about with all of the communities? You know, and what do we have for, what do we have, 'cause if we need that extra help, you know, we should be helping you.
Right.
You know, so, but I need to know what, what we're talking about in terms of maybe caseload or what are we using for our criteria to back up our request, I guess is?
Well, the way that contract. Well, the way that contract works, it's technically with Morehead. If the other cities are encompassed in that and they are supposed to be reimbursing Morehead. So Morehead pays us the contract and then looks to payment from this outline once to pay them back. What we, and we agree what, we see the rise in caseloads and don't think it should all fall on the county when a good chunk of it is the misdemeanors and the traffic. I know that when Ms. Marzo was here, or is the, I don't know if it's every two years that the contract runs and they kind of fallen behind on renewing it?
We're off contract.
We're off contract right now.
But that benefits us though, doesn't it? I mean, if they're not in a contract?
Well...
Well, we're still providing the service and they're still paying the rate that we agreed to in the contract, so.
Oh, okay, I got it.
I can get into it a little bit.
So if I can follow up on that then, so, you know, and I'm assuming that, you know, the city run, has their own budget and their city manager does their thing and I suppose they're looking at the price that they pay and Jim's a former member of the Martin City Council, but, so I'm assuming they look at, you know, the price that they pay the county. This is what they would do if they went out on their own and do it. So what portion of your workload would be released if there was no contract and Morehead went their, their own way? What, how would that? I mean, that's something I don't want to see happening.
No, right.
You know, but somewhere...
Well, listen, I mean, I would say, I would have to look at the numbers.
Two and a half, two and a quarter attorneys.
Yeah, at least two and a half attorneys.
And, and just to be clear, we don't have attorneys who are assigned to do the city cases, so the work comes in, everybody, everybody does a little bit of all of it.
Right.
It really is divided more by the case type than offense location.
Sure. Right.
Yeah, there, I think there's essentially three attorneys probably working on various city or misdemeanor type things at this time. How it's going to change when we fill the new position, I don't know. What we did was we presented to the city of Morehead a list of our cases and the amounts and how it's gone up year after year. The city manager came back with her own numbers, however, she didn't include traffic. I don't know why, and that's a large number. And it's very time consuming because although it's only traffic court trials, they are, they consume an entire day of trial, court trials and a lot of time. I mean, that's the ones people call in, they don't have attorneys and it takes a lot of time to prep those and get them ready. So I'm not sure, and it was always the civil side of it, so maybe Steve knows if anything has been set up to get back on contract, but every time we go back, we're asking him and we're showing him the numbers, but we're just not getting anywhere right now with the city manager.
Maybe we should fix that.
Yeah. I think that's an issue. I mean, I was involved in this when it first started and it's a great deal for Morehead and the other communities in the county.
Yes.
You know, and it's, you know, there's no profit motive here for the county involved and so I think, you know, maybe the city needs to be put on notice that they better get on board with this or, you know, some other action will have to be taken by the county, so.
I'm going to agree with that statement really.
I mean, I don't think they understand if they were going to go out on their own, they have to find, first of all, in the past, it's been private firms, then they have to find someone that can cover court all these random times. Plus they need to have access to our E charging.
Well, it's a service and a cost issue both involved in this and so they, they wouldn't find out the hard way if they choose to go a different direction, which...
But the reality is, I mean, we contract for all sorts of service from, you know, lawn mowing and on up. So the thought that we're having something as significant as this, that's not actively being sought to secure a contract is ridiculous.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions on this part of the budget?
I am.
Steve, I think you've got where we are on this.
I just had one, when Steve was mentioning the litigation, trial budget, I'm not sure. On the last copy I had, it looked like we hadn't met that trial budget. We did. I think that was the beginning of May, it was the last date. And then we had the Justin Critt murder trial, so we did max out our trial budget last year. I'm assuming with the cases that I mentioned, that'll be going to trial in 2019. We're going to be well above that trial budget again. But as Steve said, we do have forfeiture funds that we usually pull out of, depending on how bad it is for the following year and I wouldn't be surprised if in 2020 we are asking more for the trial budget, but...
Steve, any other questions? What does that forfeiture fund typically run out?
It really kind of depends. I think right now we have it, it's about 150.
All right. Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I think the budget looks really good.
Okay. Michelle, do you want to come up here and we'll talk a little bit about your restorative justice? Thanks Pam. Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning. Thank you. Yeah, I know that we, and maybe some of the questions got answered through Steve too, but if there's anything related to kind of some of the shifting that has happened with our, both the restorative justice program and the victim witness services, I manage the grant components of both of those programs. So I'm happy to either answer any questions or give you updates about where we're at with, with either of those funded programs.
Michelle, are you, do you do the grant writing?
I do, yes.
So you're constant when you're looking for revenue streams or?
Yeah, we've been pretty sustained with our funding. The dollars don't necessarily increase as much. I think they're pretty stable and then I think the balance is that cost of everything increases. So that's always the struggle is to still maintain the programming with grant funding that doesn't always, that stays as a pretty stable rate, which is a great thing, but at the same point, doesn't maybe always flow with the increases that occur.
Okay. Well, anyone that writes grants, I'm incredibly grateful for because there's a reason the five of us aren't writing grants. So it takes a talent. So I forgot to thank likes and praise for what you do, but thanks for writing.
Sure, thank you.
It's, it's talent.
Yeah.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, I do. So, so you also then oversee the victim witness?
Yep.
So in just looking at the expenditure side of that budget, you know, when I look and I see you're looking at more part-time help, it's, it looks to me like that's up, you know, a little over 10,000.
So last, or probably this, beginning of this year, late last year, we really tried to better categorize some of our staffing who were doing more specific victim service work that were maybe categorized as a legal assistant or a legal secretary. And so through the work with Brian Melton and then Darren through human resources, we really were able to better align people with the work that they were doing. And we were utilizing variable dollar hours, but exceeding that generally, both with Nikki Erickson because of the workload and Lacey Johnson, who was another part-time staff. And so we spent that, those couple months, just really kind of taking a look at what their workload and their caseload is and then what the hours that they were doing. So there was an increase. Some of that was additional grant funding or realigning some of the grant funding to cover some of those additional benefit costs because that was what came to a lot of the changes was that getting them to the hours that they were actually working then contributed more to that fringe and tax and benefits.
Okay, so that explains then why the health insurance is, is quite a bit higher.
Correct.
So you had somebody then who obviously tracked more hours than a variable hour would, which then put them into the benefit category.
Yes, so we had two people who were technically variable hour, but based on the workload and that's what we were really trying to really realign them with the actual work that they were doing, the hours that they were doing. And so I know that that was a, an approach that Brian Melton had brought, I believe, to the board to, to kind of better categorize those staff. I believe that was towards the end of last year and started here in January.
I think we talked about that this year in the pick too, I think it was.
Yeah. Yeah, so that is the reflection of those increased costs.
Very good, thank you.
Yes.
Questions? Thank you very much for the explanation.
Yeah, for sure.
For sure, to see where everyone's at.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you.
You know, just that restorative justice, just a comment on that, that is actually a very good program and it really, in the long run, it can save county.
Yes.
A lot of money.
And keep in mind as a side, first of all, it's a great program.
Yes.
It helps, usually juveniles, hold people at Calhoun Court they've done, but also make it right. I mean, you can speak to process department, I can, but it, it accomplishes a lot and every one of those is a case that either I or somebody in my division is not bringing to court or going through court. So it, it's not, is valuable, even if it took more time, it'd be worth doing, but it actually saves time too.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the support.
Item number seven is a request for approval of insurance renewals for 2019. We have Darian Brooke, also Jennifer Pearson. Good morning. Just for the public's knowledge, I believe Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Haney are on the insurance committee.
Correct.
They've been part of the dialogue as well as the pick committee on this.
Yep. Well, thanks for having us today. Most of this, I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer here, but just to give you a little bit of background, this year, we did a lot in looking at the health benefits and after our, as you recall, our increase of 14.9% last year, we got together with the, not only the insurance committee, but also the, we created a couple, a subcommittee and kind of looked in a lot of various different ways that we could not only reduce our benefits costs, but also one of the other things that we were looking at is how can we make family plans more affordable? And so we have met several times with the subcommittee and then, was it last week, we met with the insurance committee for the full committee and kind of presented that. But this itself is for the 2019 renewal. And so with that being said, I'll hand it over to Jennifer to kind of go through those numbers.
Good morning. I'm sure commissioners, this was included in your packet of the, this is the renewal premiums for 2019. The health insurance, we're happy to say, was a 2% increase for 2019. It's a really good increase for the county. A lot of that was with our claims, our incurred claims were down 416,000 and our projected were down 510,000. We had nine high cases, five of which dropped off for the most important part of the renewal period, which is the most recent. So that really helped us with that 2% increase. So our increases are not that high this year. With that said, the county contribution is always half of the triple gold family plan increase, which this year is $47. So 24 of that would be put to the county contribution to bring that up from $1,270 to $1,294 for 2019. Currently, we do still use a triple gold family plan, although that may be negotiated in the future, but that's currently where we sit now. Like Darren said, we did have a lot of discussion in regard to our health insurance. We do feel like the subcommittee has come up with some great ideas for the future. We are looking at additional changes for 2020, but currently for 2019, we would like to renew the four health plans that we currently have, but we would also like to add in addition of another high deductible health plan. The IRS does call it a minimum value plan. We'd like to just stick with high deductible health plan, but it is significantly higher. It's 6,750 for a single, 13,500 for a family. One of the bonuses of this plan, even though it's higher deductible, is the county contribution will cover the family premium mostly. If we take out the dental and the basic life insurance that is required, there's still about $25 that would go that the family would have to pay. This is one way to make a family option affordable to employees. It does have an HSA or a health savings account attached to it. We will not bring it in as a combo plan, meaning there will be no VIBA trust. That means that the employee will be able to take either the entire premium, the county contribution to pay that premium, or they have the choice to take dollars and put into a health savings account. One of the things to keep in mind with these types of plans is that to make them affordable, the education really is to fully fund those pre-tax components that are coming with them. We would like to see education come in this year through both further and Blue Cross in order to not only kind of re, re-talk the plans that we currently have, but also really to educate people on why this minimum value plan would also be an attractive addition to ours, our plan options. This also is considered an additional plan option where we do not have to remove one to put this in, so we don't have to take out a plan in order to add this additional high deductible. It would be just a fifth option to our plans.
I'm sure I can speak to that. We had a lengthy discussion about the minimum value plan and I think it certainly had almost unanimous support provided, there was one little catch there and that is, is, you know, what if, what if somebody were to choose that plan and it might be a member of a bargaining unit and then all of a sudden we for some reason or future county boards determine that we want to eliminate that plan? What, what happens then on that case? And I don't know if you had a chance to research that and, and, you know, I think there was some discussion there about maybe trying to work out an MOU with all of our bargaining units. Darren, I don't know if you want to speak to that, but I, there seemed to be some information or willingness on the part of those that were in the room that that could be a way to handle that. Do you want?
Yeah, we haven't really done the verbiage on the MOU yet. This plan, since it is a, another plan that we don't have to delete a plan for, you know, I don't see us getting rid of it. If we do add another plan, like we had talked in the insurance committee of the 5,500, that would be a plan that we would have to get rid of and then, get rid of another plan and then add the 5,500. With this high deductible plan or minimum value plan, that can be out there as far as we know. Now, the only thing that would change was if, I think, if Lakes Country or Blue Cross Blue Shield changed their mind and now required that to be one of our plans, meaning it would count against our, our numbers, then we might have to look at doing something with the MOU or...
Well, once we've got it though, how can they?
Yeah, that's very difficult. The only, the only thing that I can think of, and correct me if I'm wrong Jennifer, is if that plan gets down to hardly anybody being in it, then they may drop it. I think it's what, 10 members or something like that?
They do have a stipulation where if a plan has a certain low number, it pretty much eliminates itself.
Right, right. So as we go forward in negotiations and everything, we can look to see if an MOU would be necessary and if the unions would sign off on that. As you know, there was a couple of unions that did when we wanted to eliminate the, the new enrollees from the triple gold plan, we had a couple of unions that did not sign that MOU. But I guess that's, that's our second phase of the discussion is the MOU or the triple gold and 1,000 CMM, so.
I'm just going to move through the renewal and we have three recommendations or motions to make at the end. The Affordable Care Act, one of the recommendations that we have to make and approvals is that we go forward with our grandfathered status for the three plans that are already grandfathered. As the Affordable Care Act moves forward, I think the grandfathered status maybe doesn't have as much meaning, but I think it's okay to just reclassify or continue to classify those as grandfathered status as long as we have that option. The new plans always come in as non-grandfathered. So the three that would be, would be the triple gold, the VIBA 2,600 and the CMM 1,000. The VIBA 3,375 is non-grandfathered and if approved, the VIBA, or excuse me, the high deductible 6,750 would also be non-grandfathered. We can certainly open discussion on that. We have approved that grandfathered status since the Affordable Care Act has been in place, or we can just make that motion at the end as well. In regard to dental insurance, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota... In regard to dental insurance, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota was approving the seed or allowing us to have Blue Cross of North Dakota as our dental carrier. That seed was denied for 2019 because Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota came out with a competitive, what they felt was a competitive dental plan and did give us a proposal for that plan. So Blue Cross of North Dakota was not able to even give us a renewal because we were considering Blue Cross of Minnesota's dental proposal. While reviewing that plan, it is matching our current plan design. There are a few enhancements with that as well, but mainly it matches our plan design with a couple of tweaks where it's now gonna be dependents covered up to 26 as our health insurance does. There'll be no proof of other coverage required if somebody's dropping from family to single, which has kind of been an issue over the years. There's also, the qualifying events will be more like our health insurance qualifying events where people can make mid-year changes to that plan. The one other big difference is that currently, there would be no waiting periods on the new plan through Blue Cross of Minnesota. We do currently have a 270-day waiting period or nine months on the North Dakota one. We don't necessarily have to have one that big. I think the point of that is to make sure that we bring in enough family premiums to cover any claims that may go out. The recommendation of the insurance committee was to keep a waiting period in there, but to possibly reduce that to six months. I did discuss that with Blue Cross of Minnesota and they didn't think that would have any big adverse effect on our claims. The Blue Cross of Minnesota also comes in at lower rates, so we would go down from 146 for family to 143 and from single, we'd go from 57 to 55. So they're coming in lower. One major difference that we'll see this year, and it would be the same with even if we stayed with North Dakota, is that they're changing the dental provider to the United Concordia. Blue Cross of North Dakota went that way because they didn't feel they could stay in the dental game if they didn't get a bigger provider or a dental carrier for their dentists and, but Blue Cross of Minnesota has also gone that direction. So there will be a change in who manages our dentists, no matter which plan we choose. One thing to keep in mind, we have heard concerns about moving to United Concordia. We just need to keep in mind that the dental plan will still be blue branded, meaning it is managed by Blue Cross, and so it will not have any type of United Concordia management in regard to how claims are processed or who gets approved for a claim such as crowns or those types of things. They will only manage the dentists. Currently, they're telling us that 92.4% of our members will have access to a participating dentist, not necessarily meaning that's their current dentist, but hopefully by the beginning of the year, we will have, that pool will be bigger for those choices. So the insurance committee did recommend to move to the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota dental plan with the reduction of rates and then the six-month waiting period and then the change to United Concordia as the dentist management there.
I just wanna briefly talk about that waiting period issue and I, I think it was important to note that had we not had a waiting period, you could have had people just waiting until they know they need something done, then sign up for it, have it done, then go off. And of course, what happens then is you end up with high claims and no premium dollars to support it.
Exactly.
And so, in the long run, it would have been more expensive for all other employees in the long run. So I, you know, and I, and I think it was a, they did, you know, the members of the insurance committee, the employees did feel that maybe nine months was too much and so I think we kind of mutually agreed that six, six months would be a better waiting period. But that's kind of the reason behind the waiting period is that you just can't juggle in and out when you need the insurance, so.
What are you talking about going in and out on a, I mean, dental plan you have right away, I mean, once you sign up for the, it's part of the package, isn't it?
Right, when you, when we first hired you.
Okay, so what are you talking about switching from family to single or?
Yeah, this would be more for late enrollees. So for example, if you had children that you didn't bring onto your plan in the beginning, but at open enrollment, you brought them on, if they don't have back-to-back coverage, then a waiting period would be applied to those individuals. It doesn't apply to initial enrollees because it's guaranteed coverage for our employees, but late enrollees that may not, may come on at a later date would have that. This really only applies in an instance where the person comes on later, say at open enrollment, and does not have back-to-back dental coverage. If they do have back-to-back dental coverage and the waiting period is actually waived.
Or if they elected to not have the full family coverage of dental at open enrollment and then decided three months later, when they find out a family member has, has something done and they wanna enroll, they, that...
So we consider dental plans in the middle of the?
No, typically on a mid-year change, if it's a qualifying event, that is not gonna have a waiting period because they qualified under a mid-year change. This really would be, let's just say I had five family members out there, but I took single coverage when I initially signed up. Those people were eligible to be covered, but I chose not to. So at open enrollment, I decided I wanted to go to family coverage, but they did not have previous family dental coverage. Those individuals would be assigned a waiting period. And that's to help so that you, maybe you brought your family members on because they needed, you know, extensive dental work, but now we haven't been able to, excuse me, bring in the family premium to cover those outgoing claims.
So we only do open enrollment once a year, don't we?
Right, unless, say, your spouse changes a job and the...
Unless you qualify for an open enrollment.
There's qualifying events that...
Yes, right.
And that's why they, they did recommend it wouldn't have a huge adverse effect if we at least, you know, brought our waiting period to be a shorter one. Removing it may not be the best idea yet. I mean, we could certainly look at that in the future, but I think keeping it, but maybe not making it nine months would be a starting point.
Questions?
Okay, so our vision as well, they, we are coming at the end of a two-year rate guarantee with a VISA anyway, so they did, the, excuse me, the premiums would have slightly increased. They did propose a couple of other options to us. They are trying to get rid of the basic vision plan that we have right now. And so they did present a couple of options where we would have a little bit more coverage for progressive lenses. With the claims that we've brought in over the past two years, they did say that this, adding this progressive package would cover about 75% more of our claims and still bring in about a $58 savings for employees. We also looked at a, a package from IMED. That looked like more of a beneficial package if we had more basic claims that didn't need progressive lenses, but looking at our history, I think the progressive package would be more beneficial.
I don't think we have that.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, no.
No, I did not put the proposal in here. I just put the end rates in. The proposals were all reviewed by the insurance committee and so our recommendation would be to include the more progressive plan for a VISA, which would mean a little bit more progressive lenses, which is $134 value for about $1.56 more in premium on the single side. So we recommend that. It was reviewed by the committee. We did kinda go over the differences in that regard. So, any questions on the vision? So the motions that we need to have adopted, and I did put them separately, I hope that's appropriate. The first motion would be to accept the new county contribution rate as well as to renew contracts with our current insurance providers with the changes outlined above.
All right, so they are on your memo sheet. The first one being the motion to adopt the new contribution rate and renew the contracts with current insurance providers is outlined.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Haney to approve the first motion.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The second motion then would be to approve the proposed dental for Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota for 2019.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Haney. Further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And then the grandfathered status, Jennifer, is the third?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to approve the grandfathered status of Triple Gold, CMM 1,000 and VIBA 2,600 under the ACAAM.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
Motion second by Commissioner Haney. Any further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign.
Madam Chair, one question please. If I can go to the first, yeah, wait, I'm sorry. The first motion, that did include the option two on the vision, right? It was included in, in the first motion?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, well, there are three motions. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work on that. All right, the next item, Darren, is your discussion on the compensation study for 2019.
Yeah, I brought this up. I actually attended a seminar a couple of weeks ago, HR seminar, and one of the topics that they had was on compensation studies. And so, as you probably know, or maybe some of you don't because you weren't here, neither was I, our last compensation study was in 2008, 2009 timeframe. And during this seminar, they kinda said that you should really look at compensation studies to be done between eight and 10 years. Well, as you know, we're at our 10-year mark for our compensation study that we've done before. And looking at some of this, I think, let me get back to my sheet. The job market, as you probably know, has changed dramatically between 2008 and 2018. I put in my notes there that the, this, for the last four months, the job openings have exceeded the number of job seekers for the last four months, which is pretty incredible. And I was also tasked to, to review 25% of the PDQs every year, just to kinda make sure that we're still in line with our compensation study. But as you remember, back in 2008, 2009, we're in, we were in the middle of a recession and now we have low unemployment. And what I'm starting to see is mostly on our low end, not necessarily on our high end, because we have a 12-step system, we're starting to fall a little bit behind on some of the wages of our comparables. And so, what I wanted to do is kinda ask the board if we wanted to, for me to proceed, in looking at possible compensation study information, you know, gathering some, maybe some providers that do compensation study, maybe getting some costs. When I look back in the records, it looks like we spent about a little over $18,000 for the actual study. And then the implementation, where they started moving everybody, was a little, I think it was a little less than $300,000. So, this isn't, I guess this is a time to say, should I move forward in looking at a comp study in the next year or two? I would say, if we would approve it, we would do the comp study next year with maybe a 2020 implementation date. As you know, a lot of our contracts, our most recent contracts are up in 2020. And so, that's why I brought it to the board, because I don't wanna expend a lot of time and, and energy. Just to give you an example, when I hired my HR admin assistant many years ago, we had over 120 applicants for that job. When we opened up the admin assistant down in stairs in planning and zoning, we had six. And so that's kinda telling you what the market is like and, and we're not going to get people if we're not competitive in the market. So that's where I'm kinda requesting your guidance and, and approval to move forward with that.
All right, Commissioner Campbell?
Madam Chair, I was here in 2008 and I remember it and it was something that was needed then and it's needed now. And so I, I really would encourage us to, to move forward with that study and I think your timeline of, because it does take a little time to do and implementation in 2020, whatever the outcome of that is found. But it, it's clear to me in every time we have an opening and when we hear from our department managers about the low amount of applicants even and sometimes having to even go beyond step one through three, which is the right of our administrator to do without our approval. So it seems to me that we have to do this and, and I, I guess, Madam Chair, I would, I would move that we move forward with, with the study. And I don't know, is that a bidding thing, Darren, if I could ask or?
You know, I'd have to probably look back at how they did it before. Like I said, it wasn't here, so I don't know if they bitted it out or they chose somebody. I know that Cass County just did one, Fargo area, and I've gotten some of the results. What's the nice thing about it is we get, I get these requests every so often of another county that's doing a comp study. And so they'll request information from us on what our wages and benefits are. And then as a result of that, they will give us a portion of that study as well. So I have received some of those and I just received Cass County's a couple, week or two ago.
My, my motion then is to move forward with a compensation study.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Wayland. Further discussion?
Do you have any estimate on what it will cost?
Not at this, and I guess the other thing is looking at all of the people that do comp studies now and kinda get in some comparables on what it would cost. I know Bjorkland did it last time. I'm not even sure if he's still in the business, but that will be part of my research in looking at what other counties have gotten.
You know, when we paid last, about 10 years ago?
That was 18, about 18,000.
So it's gonna be obviously more than that.
Yeah, and we also had, I think, we only had like 380 people at that point or over 550 now.
And if I recall, I think, I think because these studies and, you know, like you said, the, the potential higher cost is the implementation of the findings.
Right, exactly.
And, and it seems to me that what we did back then is because that this was something that was created over a period of time, that we did not take that all out of one year's budget to pay for.
Yeah, I think you had an increase in 2011 towards the end of the year. That was right when I was, or 2000, 2010.
I believe, I believe we used some reserve dollars to catch up.
I believe Lori said that the reserve dollars were used to, to catch up on that.
Motion for a second. Question grounds?
When you say we're not getting as many applicants anymore, are we advertising wide enough or is that, would that be a different option? I mean, how much do we advertise when we have open positions?
Well, surprisingly, I, on our application, we asked the question, how did you hear of this position? And out of all of the ones that I have seen, I can run a report on how, how they heard of our positions. Surprisingly enough, it was on our website, on our own personal website that we don't pay anything for. And then the second most was through coworkers and friends. And so, one of the things we started doing is when a job position opens up, we put it out to all county. So, because you may not be looking for a job, but you may have a friend or a relative that is looking for a job and so you can forward that to them. The, we have used newspapers, we've had, we've used Indeed, we've used Jobs HQ, all of those. They are fairly expensive, in my opinion, if we're getting most of our traffic on our own website. The other thing that is nice on our website is that you can sign up for notifications. So whenever, maybe you're not looking for a job right now, but you can sign up for a notification and every time a job comes out, it forces, that pushes that information to you. And so that kinda gets it out there as well.
And that includes the general public.
Correct.
Yes.
So...
I think the comp study though, I think we might be kinda shocked to find out. People aren't gonna apply for a job if someone's paying considerably under the money, unless they are.
Well, Madam Chair, I think we, we all know very well and it's been, we hear about it from our business community and everybody, that is that right now, the, the workforce is a major issue.
Right.
In our, in our region. And so, if we're not gonna be competitive, we're not gonna get...
Right. And you're, you're talking, you know, trying to attract, attract top talent into this area. And I think one of the things you gotta, I think reviewing the 25% every year and kinda maintaining, you know, the calls that we've been giving, I think we'll be closer now than what we were because we hadn't done a comp study for, I don't know how many years before the 2008 one. And that cost to bring everybody back up to a competitive stage. Hopefully, we won't have that, that big of a bill this year.
If I recall right, I think in 2008, when we talked about it, I think they had said that prior to that, it was the early 90s.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I, I think somebody said 20 years, but that's, so that's why they kinda recommend to do it every eight to 10 years, so you don't have these huge amounts that you're trying to catch up with the market.
Okay. All right, well, we have a motion and a second for the discussion. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Opposed, same sign, motion passes. We are running a little behind, so if the board's okay with it, we'll move right into item number 10. Request for approval for hiring the planning and zoning director and possibility of adding a zoning technician position. Darren?
Yep, that one also, as you know, we lost our planning and zoning director, and then we, shortly after that, we lost our other person in that office, the administrative assistant. And so, we've been kind of struggling on how we want to formulate that. And before Brian Berg left, we were talking about land management division and all of that. And I think what we came down to is, don't fix what isn't broken. And so, the PIC meeting, that we had a PIC meeting, and it was discussed about not only hiring a planning and zoning director, but also a planning and zoning technician. The reasoning behind some of that is to get out and do a little bit more of the enforcement to ensure that permits that are being issued are adhered to, and hopefully, staving off some of the issues that we have with land management to, in regards to like the Lake 15 and some of those other ones that we've been dealing with. So, the PIC recommended that not only do we hire a planning and zoning director, but we also add the position of a planning and zoning technician. Some of the discussion, I did relook at the PDQ and the supervisory responsibilities, and right now, the planning and zoning director was at a grade 25. I think that would probably come down to a grade 23. And then, the planning and zoning technician would be at a grade 20, a grade 15, with the admin assistant being at a grade 10, which is what it is right now. We have already advertised, interviewed, and selected the planning and zoning administrative assistant, because we needed somebody down there to get.
Absolutely.
And she starts on next Monday.
Okay.
So, she'll be in there to help out as well. The, let's see, I guess the question I have on my sheet here is, we have two options, option one or option two, whether we hire the planning and zoning technician, if approved first, to get the office back up and running, and then, take our time and really look for a qualified planning and zoning director. Or do we go with hiring the planning and zoning director first, so that that person then could select the planning and zoning technician as well?
Well.
So, those were kind of the two discussions.
Yeah, those were two discussions. I believe it was the kind of hope from the PIC committee that we do option number one.
The tech first.
Hometown planning has been a really good option in the meantime, until we can get something going. And our thought was that it was going to take probably more time to find a director than a technician.
Correct.
And so, to get a technician in there first, to work kind of simultaneously with hometown planning on what the issues are going on.
Yep.
I think in a perfect world, it would be great to have a director choose what the tech would be.
Sure.
We're not, we're not there. I think we just need to have someone in there to really kind of keep the ball moving.
Well, I agree with that, and we, in our discussion too, you know, I think in even doing the tech position first, we still have, you know, these people that we've contracted with that are fairly knowledgeable, and that can, that can still help us.
Right.
In making sure that we get the right tech person too. I just, I just think if we, if we push too hard on the director position first, we've got something temporarily in place.
Right. I think that what we could do is, we could certainly advertise them both at the same time, and then see what we get. And then, as we start getting applications in, we can kind of figure out, this would be a better tech, this would be a better director, and see what the qualifications is. And I think it'll probably take a little longer to hire the director, but I'm not sure I would hold off on advertising for the director at this point. We could hire it later, but it would give us some more time to leave that advertisement out there as applications come in. And maybe even put in the application that we would be looking at a hire date of one January or something.
But don't you think that people that may be better qualified for the tech, if they see the director position open, they're only going to apply for the director?
Well, we see all applications. So, if we, if we open up a tech and somebody comes in with a ton of planning and zoning director experience, we could certainly move that application over if we think that person would be a better director. Or if we advertise for the director, and they don't have the qualifications needed to be a director, we can shift that over to the tech to see if they would be interested in that position as well. So, I think we control that on the back end, on where everybody, because we see all the applications that are coming in for both positions.
Commissioner Gross.
I just wanted, I mean, if we hire a planning and zoning first, and we say we're going to hold off on the director, what's to say the planning and zoning guy that we hired is not going to, or her, or whatever, is not going to apply for the director job too? Then we have to go back and apply for the planning and zoning guy again?
Well, there are going to be different qualifications.
Yeah.
Well, I'm looking for a planning and zoning job, I'm going to apply, I guess, you know, I just.
That's, that's why I think we can manage the applications on the backside of, if, yeah, if we hire somebody as a tech, and he decides he wants to.
Be the director a couple of months later.
A couple of months later, hopefully, we would have the tech already in place, and the director.
Well, I mean, like I said, if you hire him as a tech, and then he can still apply for the director job.
If he's qualified, if they're qualified. I just don't really foresee that happening too much, because I think we can manage that on the backside of which, where we're putting their applications against.
Right.
The, I did do a little bit of funding on the back sheet there. If we were to hire the planning and zoning tech just for the October through December of 2018, at grade 15, step one, that would be about $14,000, that includes everything. If for 2019, at a planning and zoning tech, at step, grade 15, step one would be about $68,000. And a planning and zoning director for 2019, at a grade 23, we thought bringing them in at step four, just for templating purposes, that would be 102,000. We have saved approximately 62,000 with our planning and zoning director departing in July, from July to December, but that doesn't include the contract that we have for hometown planning as well, so some money is going out for that as well. So, just a little bit of funding sources. And I believe that during the budget review, Steve and Lori will talk.
Well, Madam Chair, I maybe, you know, and I think maybe we can, let's look at a hybrid. And, you know, our recommendation from our, our meeting was to go with option one, but I certainly don't see a problem with putting both of them out there, as our HR is talking about. The sooner we can get them both in-house, the better off we're going to be.
Right, I believe.
In the long term, so with that, I would, I would move, move that we move forward with putting, advertising for both positions.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Campbell to advertise for two positions. And a second by Commissioner Wayland for the discussion.
Is that option one or option two?
It's, it's option.
Three.
Three.
I think we could still, I personally think that it will be easier to find a tech, because we're only requiring two years of education for that. The planning and zoning director is kind of a unique position, I think it's going to take us longer.
In all likelihood, option one will probably happen.
And I think, like I said earlier, I think the hometown planning offers a good perspective that it will be helpful in that search.
Yep.
And the sooner we can get people in there, the better. But the other thing that we haven't really touched on is the need for adding a tech. And what the need really is, is to avoid something that we've just been dealing with. The, when you have a department of two, you're siloed, and so there's really no chance for a transition plan, you get caught in a bind if someone's taking a vacation in terms of workload. And so, I think what a tech would add is to have a amount of compliance checks on the permits, and also a second set of skills to kind of help with what getting permits together are. And I have noticed that it's been a shortfall of that department, and so I'm excited for what the possibility of adding a tech would bring.
Yeah, gives us a little bit of depth in that.
I'd have to agree, the sooner we can get this thing filled, because I've been working with a resident this week, and just, or last week. We need to get someone there to help these people out, you know, this stuff's a really cold as number, and it's just not, we're not treating our residents right. We need to fill it.
So, we have a motion and a second for the discussion. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes.
Madam Chair, one last thing on that, I, when it comes to the director position, I think, I think the tech position, I'm fine with HR going about and doing that, but I think when it comes to the director, I would, I would suggest that you being on the planning commission also serve as the review committee of those applicants.
Yep, that's fine.
Good, perfect.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, the next item is the budget review for planning and zoning, Steve Larson. Appreciate it.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. And I would note, just in addition to the last conversation, I have had conversation with Ben. Originally, Ben was kind of brought on as a short-term solution, and he stated that he would be willing to, to stay and provide that continued contract until we move forward. So, you have two, actually two, if you look in your packet, you have the original, the original budget, and also just handed out your new budget. If you take a look at, look at the, they're pretty similar, even with the additions. The position that we just discussed are, have been added into, into this new budget. And so, if you, you look at where we are at originally, in the, in the one that came out with your packet, we were looking at expenses of right around 292,000, with the new, with a new department head there on line 23 rather than 25, starting at line four, or potentially rather than at the max. We look at, our expenses went down to 256,000. The new position, as Darren mentioned, would be an additional $68,000. And so, that's really where you're going to see your major differences in, in the expenses and the revenues next year. And so, I can open that up for any questions. If you see, if you take a look in the, in the, in the revenues, this year, there's a $200,000 adjustments in the, in the riparian aid, that has to do with, with our buffer zone. And so, that's, that comes in every two years. We, in Clay County, we do receive a maximum out that the state DNR allows.
And that's something that we're, we're working with Soil and Water and Highway in terms of how, how those dollars are going to be kind of allocated. I think Lori, we were, or maybe have been billed already by Soil and Water for some of that time, I know they have someone, someone dealing with that, so it's kind of a conglomeration of who's going to tap into that 200.
But.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, so, so we have the grant money coming in to planning and zoning, but where do we have it going out?
Down, it looks like in the, down in riparian, riparian protection.
The very bottom.
We're in the bottom. I think that goes to Commissioner Mojo's.
Oh, okay, so, okay.
And then, other parts of it, if there would be penalties, you know, if we had to, for some reason, plant something that a owner doesn't want to plant, then money from that initial could go to.
So, that 200,000, that's for two years, isn't it? Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? For a county that's growing as quickly as we are, you're statewide, that we are in the top couple of companies that are growing, we can do more with what this budget, with what we've been doing with it. And I'm excited for what the addition of staff would do. Any other questions for this? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you want to do your budget update?
Sure.
I'm trying to get us back on schedule. Lori? Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, Madam Chair, as you guys are well aware, with Administrator Berg retiring, he retired in a very interesting spot, right in the middle of the budget process, and so.
Bad news and bad fire.
So, unfortunately, unfortunately, we're a little bit far behind generally than you guys would like to be, I think. And Lori and I have been, have been working, I guess, in verifying the accuracy of what's being provided. You've had the opportunity to sit down and listen to a number of department heads give their presentations, and to this point, really, have just really listened. And so, I think today, part of what we'd like to do is kind of open a dialogue, and in years past, generally, you kind of give myself and Lori a target for our department heads to go to. Our initial, our initial summary of the 19 tax levy started right around 10%. I think when we handed your, handed out to you, I think we were down to four, or, excuse me, 8%, excuse me. And, and with some different adjustments to the COLAs, we became aware of the insurance adjustments. We also, the tax levy for program aid for, came out since then, and we made those adjustments within the budget. And so, you're also in front of the, this budget also, or this percentage also includes the different requests that have been made to you. Initially, there were, we requested about $12,000. Since then, help desk positions been asked, the planning and zoning tech that we just discussed. And then, again, we were tasked with coming back, with continuing to fund the census serve program. So, that's all included in, in this area. Right now, we're anticipating the net levy increase of 6.17%. I know that we have our, have to set our maximum levy next week, but wanted to open up the dialogue to get your thoughts.
Couple of adjustments that we could make in the past, the abatement program, which we have 500,000 in the budget right now, we typically paid for that out of fund balance. So, if we took that out, we would be at a net after growth of 4.44, if we took that 500 out of the budget and took it out of fund balance.
Lori, I asked a question of Stephen this morning too. When will we know more about the entire package of our revenues over expenditures from 2017?
We're pretty much done with it. So, I can put, if you want something for next week, we can.
So, yeah.
Put something together, that'll be pretty.
You know, so, you know, I, you know, in the past, I've always suggested that we can use a part of any revenues over expenditures to help buy down, you know, and I, so I'm still anxious to hear about that too.
Right, we're pretty close to revenues equalling expenditures, but we might have a few final adjustments, but I should be able to get you something by next week.
Very good.
That's done.
I thought we had until the end of September.
No, it's the 15th, isn't it?
No, it's the 30th now.
Oh.
Yeah, preliminary.
But we usually do it, like, probably the second or third week in, so, I mean, we've got a little bit of time, but we don't like to wait till that last week.
Right, I just. Questions?
Are you looking for a better number than 6.17?
Well, we're looking for your feedback, and a number you can go to your constituents with.
Are you looking for a better number?
I'm looking, I'm looking for a better number, most definitely.
I'd like to see it in between 3 and 4% somewhere.
And you're talking about the net?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I guess I'm on board with that. I, you know, if we can keep it, the closer to 3, the better, I think that's.
If we, if we take the 500 and another 200 of fund balance, whether it be from social services or revenue, that'd be 3.8%. And if we took another 200 beyond that, so it'd be a total of 900, including the 5, we'd be at 3.16.
I like that.
I like that number a lot better.
So, but again, I would still, Lori, I'd still like to find out. So, but again, I, I would still, Lori, I'd still like to, to find out how we actually ended up.
Last year, sure.
Yep.
Last year, year end.
No problem.
Appreciate your flexibility always on this.
Well, when you, you know, if you think of a net of 3-point something with, with the 50-some million dollars in expansion, and, and all of the additional staffing that was required for the new correctional facility moving into 2019, that's pretty remarkable.
We're doing pretty good.
All right, any other comments?
Lori.
I'd like to see a, a historical value on what the new construction would be. I hear that, you know, we're continuing to grow up, but sometimes it would be interesting to see, I don't know, 10 years back to see what.
Look at the annual new construction amounts?
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Campbell? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our next item, at 10 o'clock, we have a closed session pursuant to attorney-client privilege, so we'll shut down everything, okay? Steve?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need a.
Quick break, real quick.
A motion to go on a closed session.
Motion, we need a motion.
Commissioner Gross, and a second by Commissioner Wayland for a closed session, thank you. All right, so we're back open.
I will make a motion on the tax court issues, Chair, to pay 50% of the cost of the appraisals.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Wayland to pay 50% of the tax court.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Haney, further discussion. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes, thank you. Committee reports, Commissioner Campbell?
I, the only thing I had was the insurance committee meeting last Tuesday, and we covered that in full detail in our meeting today.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Haney?
I also was at the insurance committee, and that's my total report.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gross?
No report.
No report.
Okay, thanks. Last week, I attended, I had a meeting with Peasants Forever in regards to what they're doing on their county-owned property, that was a good meeting, and then I also had a solar energy subcommittee for the planning commission, we're talking about the ordinance we're being for solar and wind, so we have some good recommendations to come to this board. That concludes my committee reports. Commissioner?
No report.
No, no report, all right, anything else? All right, um, we are adjourned.